...review, any questions, amendments, changes, deletions?
There were very many corrections that were made. And I just wanted that noted in the regular meeting and in the special meeting with the board of directors.
You've already provided those specifics. Councilwoman Diglio, any other comments? Amendments, deletions, all right. May I take a motion to approve all three minutes, please?
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes of all three meetings.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn. Will you please?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
This is Diglio. Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Flacher?
Yes.
Mayor Flacher.
Yes. All right, we welcome a full house to the meeting tonight as usual. Appreciate everyone for attending. It looks like we're about forty people. So at this point, we are open to the public. And the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate an early meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn of the microphone and please limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide copy and email copy to the clerk's office after making your comments so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Anyone?
Quarter to twelve Pine Street. Can I approach this official first?
Of course.
I'm not saying anything.
Yeah.
I'll start from here.
Okay, I'm here about the parking on Pine Street from Backdoor Labs. We have had certain instances where cars are getting too close to the corners. I'm afraid the emergency vehicles won't be able to get turns. I've had it already where we can't see sightlines and people almost hitting each other. We've had an accident out back there nineteen seventy-one or seventy-two with fire trucks on the corner of Pine and Marion because it was bad tight line there. So we have the same situation here. I'm afraid it's going to get one sooner or later. Why do we have to have it? So I have pictures there. According to Title Ninety-nine of the Parking Code in New Jersey, goes twenty-five feet from the corner is parking, fifty feet from the stop sign. Also, on many Marion, the parking area that have strictly prohibited by crossing the W O line. You have parking on one side where you have to cross the L line to go down the one way towards Sparta Avenue. That should be outlawed right now or move the line over. You're breaking the law by crossing the double line. Strictly prohibited.
What road is that, Marion?
Marion Avenue. The W O line there, yes. Well, I'm proposing what you could do there to help us out is put a crosswalks there on the corner. That means it has to be twenty-five feet from the crosswalk instead of twenty-five feet from the corner. That would be thirty to thirty-five feet from the corner to give us better sightlines. And then also for future work on Backdoor Labs, they designed that for certain amount of people, though a hundred and thirty percent what they expect, and then we should have enough parking for them. But this is not manageable anymore. It's getting more and more. I called the policeman for one time and they come out and say, "What do you want me to do?" I said, "Give him a ticket." He goes over to the car and he cuts it off in the car. We have this shield in the car, a P V S shield. Next day, she parks up from my driveway and she gives my wife a hard time saying, "Is this illegal to park here?" I don't need that. I'm going to have to take the first budget, not for myself. So the time has to be done here. Thank you.
So are there no signs that say no parking here at a corner?
No, none. Thank you.
All right. I'm Eddie Pomeranz. I'm here to thank you. I know that doesn't happen a lot. Our lovely neighbor, Chris, and her family moved in next door. And when she found out that all of the homes on Mill Street were no longer, they were all, I believe, residential, not residential, but...
Commercial.
Commercial. Obviously, if you've gone past the college and look across the street, you know that there's no reason for commercial. Well, I know we've talked with Tom and Sir Ditchy and Tom put somebody on the job. We did a great job. And you'll be voting tonight to approve that. I just also wanted to say, having spent forty-seven years in that home, things are getting really better on the street. All the houses are done well. All of the lawns are done well. And with the exception of the forty-five mile an hour speed limit, which has consistently exceeded that, we're all living in a nice environment. And that's important in terms of maintaining the value of our talent.
Mr. Pomeranz, can you repeat your address?
One fifty-five Mill Street.
Okay.
Right across from the girls' soccer field.
There you go. And I think what you're referring to are some of the discussion lines that we have. Jessica Caldwell or Tom Glenn are here to discuss with the council tonight.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
You have to watch out for me, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to add. I'm Kathy Pomeranz from one fifty-five Mill Street. If it weren't for our new neighbor, Chris Hansen, we would not have known about this zoning change. And I really want to thank her and her persistence, as we all should have, so this could get better. My gift. Thank you.
Good evening. You live in Lebov, one seventeen Pine Street. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a new topic because this postal office on Main Street, only God knows what's happening to them. Because no matter how you send that mail, whether it's express, certified, it's taking more than ten business days to be delivered even to wherever we get sent. And I was wondering, where's the factory that passed these mails in a second? I know everything is nearby. And today, one time my husband went to the post office and asked one of their workers, "Okay, one day I'll pay twenty-four dollars because this needs to get even as an emergency somewhere. Why did it take more than eleven days?" And she just told him, "I'm sorry, I don't know the answer, but that shouldn't have happened." And she's like, "What's going on? Do y'all need more workers? You don't have enough because you're telling us to do things no matter, even if you pay extra, but now you're delivering things regularly." And the post office really needs an investigation because, yes, they'll delay your bills when everything is not even getting here on time. So I wanted to let you know, Main Street.
Thank you. Yeah, having brought those concerns to the postmaster.
When we ask who we reported to, it's like even the nice employees in there, they don't want to give us that information. But if you can give it to me tonight on the second in her name or even who I asked for, I'll definitely go for that already.
The postmaster is the one that's in charge of operations at this particular site.
Okay.
And certainly, the jurisdiction for operations at the post office is a federal situation.
Right.
Not in the state or a town for sure. But I would definitely raise those concerns with the postmaster.
The postmaster, okay, so I got to look that up to see who it is. But sometimes you ask these people on the second, but they say, "If I don't report it to you, who else will we report it to?" "Oh, right now I'm busy, I can't give you the answer." And that was, no, right there, that was the thing. Okay.
Hello. My name is Joe Etter and I live on sixty-five Spring Street. I have two small things that sound really trivial to just bring up. You know, small things add up over time. Last time I actually spoke here, it was about like the crazy amounts of litter that's on the green and like there's tons of people leave their dog droppings. Seems totally stupid, but when I go walk my dog and I clean up after him, but I would like other people to do the same. I think the large reason of that is there's no trash can anywhere there. And actually, every like Friday or Saturday morning that I go out there, I see like a whole ton of litter because there's a bunch of people that like to hang out there late at night. The place that not the biggest deal in the world, but super annoying to look out my window, see that big green. And the second thing is, I think about a week ago, there was like leaf blowing happening outside my window at like four AM. And I think that I don't think anyone wants to live in a spot where things like that happen. I mean, I get that like maybe a event was happening or something like that has to get done. But if you want people to live on Spring Street and kind of make that like a nicer spot, then I'm not sure of the right answer for that, but something kind of has to be better about that. I remember about six months ago, there was construction happening all through that, I don't know, around the park area. And there was like blinding lights coming in through my window all the way up until two AM morning. So it gets super annoying and if people are trying to move in, like they're not going to be as understanding possibly as I am. So just a suggestion, those two things seem trivial. If something gets done about that.
Still, I have to clarify my question with the doctor, please, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So are we talking specifically on the green, the green space, on the green?
Facing like first corner clocks.
Okay, so the county part?
Oh. Yes.
Oh.
Okay. I'm sure that you guys can afford that.
I mean, you know, we certainly share the concerns that we're hearing from citizens for sure, but we don't and can't, quite frankly.
Totally. I got that with like adding a trash can or whatever for litter. I mean, that's fine, but I'm pretty sure, is it still town that's had like the light sparring in?
So no, that would be the state, actually, because they were doing the work.
Right. So I'm at the wrong spots to be talking about.
You know, but it's all good.
That was the milling and paving.
Okay. It was a rough like two weeks of that just there.
It was rough at my house, too.
Yeah.
It's not pleasant. You can hear the vibratory roller shaking in the house.
Okay. But I'm parking up the wrong tree right now.
Like, I feel like you're totally giving your answer, right? But it's this interesting space that we share in the town of Newton, every county seat, right?
Right.
So the one parcel you're talking about belongs to county. And then the other issue that you're talking about is the state's issue. But I appreciate you coming here and at least expressing your concern. This is, you know, probably...
And the power tools, four in the morning?
So the leaf blowing, though, that's us.
Okay.
You know, I was coming to that. We'll take that one, how's that?
All right, sounds good. I appreciate it.
Is that the noise or isn't it?
Yeah, probably, but...
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Becky Burrow. I live on Twenty Ryerson and I also own the girlhouse in New Jersey. I know, so you're back with me. I was here to talk about Harry Potter Day or Wizard Con, as we've been working for a while. I know we've had some issues with the organization trying to run the event and the costs that is going to come to the town. I just want to advocate that we try to find something, some middle ground, maybe somewhere in between, that we can continue to have this event. I can, at least, I know I'm not speaking for myself when I say to the merchants that this is very, very important. Last year was, I think, for most of the Spring Street merchants, one of the busiest days that we've ever, it was the busiest day we've ever had, but one of the busiest days. It was one of those that actually helped pull me out of this bad spot and catch up to where I needed to be to continue being open. And losing that, and especially losing it, and I'm, like, there's murmurs of it continuing on elsewhere and something that we have worked so hard to build and create and something that was so, it felt, you know, I know it was a little chaotic, but it felt so good to see that many people come to Newton and actually like want to invest in Newton. I've heard people starting businesses and buying houses and stuff after the Harry Potter event because it seemed like it was something that the town was fun and interesting and new. And I just want to advocate that, or hope that we can push them to find something to make us continue to stay in Newton, to work for the town and merchants. I'm really nervous, I probably should eat some of this down now.
The only thing that I can say to you as an update late today is that Mr. Russo's having a meeting tomorrow directly with the president and CEO of Big Brothers Big Sisters. So that's the latest update.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Pastor Todd Ladick from First United Methodist Church of Newton. I did not know you lived so close. But I'm here today also for the same reason that Becky is, having been personally involved in helping do whatever I can to get my congregation involved in the planning and the execution of the spells on Spring Street Wizard Con slash Harry Potter Day. So last year's event, albeit chaotic, was such a successful event that I believe far more positive came from it than not. Since that event, which only aimed to hold people over from the parade for Small Business Saturday, business owners have opened up shop on Spring Street. People have moved here and a very positive spark of community has been ignited. Even phenomenal organizations like Big Brothers and Big Sisters have looked to open up a location in Newton and have offered to be a part of the community building efforts here, which I think is a great thing given their track record. For me, this latest turn of events is the opposite, at least as far as I understand it. So if I'm speaking in ignorance, forgive me. But it's the opposite of what promotes good community. In order for a positive and long-lasting community to be built, there needs to be trust established between all members of the community, from its leaders to its storefront owners, to its nonprofit organizations, right down to its residents. I have personally been at planning meetings where town officials were present and stressed the need for communication. And I agree that communication is important, but it is a two-way street as well. Having been a part of the planning process, I know that Aaron, Becky, and the other organizers have been in communication with the town. You know, I don't know all the communication that's going on, but I do know that there has been dialogue. Yet this decision seemingly came out of nowhere. And I'm not aware of any communication from the town to the organizers that this was even being thought of, let alone decided upon at last week's meeting, again, if I'm understanding the details correctly. Perhaps I am ignorant of such communication, but I am certainly not aware of any. On top of that, the decision comes so close to the actual event that hasn't been going on in planning for quite some time. While I understand that such events do cost the town money, and I'm not naive to that, I believe that this decision is small-minded in scope and vision. The decision will shut down the event altogether, bring in zero dollars for the town in terms of the street closing and all of that. It will also hurt businesses that are looking to bring Spring Street to life and to bring people to Newton to support our local businesses on and off Spring Street. It will more likely, more than likely result in some of those businesses moving and setting up shop in a community friendlier toward small businesses, if not going out of business altogether. This decision will ultimately cost the town more money than the event itself will cost, I think, over the long haul. Beyond money, it will cost the town the trust that has been built up between the merchants and the town leadership, as well as the growing sense of pride our merchants and others have for being in this wonderful community. And I think of hashtag This Is Newton, which was swinging all over the place. My heart is with this whole community. I am proud of serving as a pastor in Newton. I love this town. I love all of you, our leaders, and I've gotten to know at least many of you, if not all. I love the business owners, its clergy, its residents. I can see such potential for positive growth in our community. And I am immensely saddened to see all this great momentum possibly be hindered by such a decision. So I just, I offer this respectfully.
Pastor, I wonder if you can tell the open what the problem is. Bonnie, are you willing to say anything?
I wasn't... Everybody can have a...
I was...
For sure, you're going to submit that. The clerk is...
What is the problem?
Anyone else?
Anyone want to share a problem? Better than me?
Can I come back up? Yeah. Well, actually, you know what? You know, Becky, I need to do it at the second public because we have a one turn. We have a second public session at the end of the meeting. Anyone else? Okay, we do now have another public session. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm fired, buddy. I need to ring you. I was looking through the agenda for today and regarding the feral cats. Did you guys define what a colony is for this stuff? Or is it just one cat?
I believe we're probably going to do that to the... So you define situation based.
All right. I have a couple other things regarding the feral project. I know you guys really strict rules about leaving these things. And it seems to me that they have, you know, some above ten inches on the perimeter of where they're building that. So you might want to take a look at that. I also had a problem. I was trying to email the code enforcement officer because I got a sort of nasty letter about things at my house. And I tried to email from the website and I got emails returned to me saying they were undeliverable, that maybe there's a problem with the links there. I tried to look at the code enforcement director and his assistants. So you might want to take a look at that as well. Also, regarding the letter, you know, we all work hard here. I work constantly to try to survive with the tax being there and making. So I really don't appreciate getting letters and that from the code enforcement director since we had problems a couple of years ago. We had a few things missed because they were just stepping back. So I think harassing somebody about having that promotion in their front yard might be overstepping. As an FYI. Thanks. Have a good day.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Move on to Councilwoman Marion's report. So a couple of things. A little where we could go away, the pleasure of celebrating the hundred and second birthday of Wally Anderson, who adds Bristol Glen. And talk about an amazing guy. He was in World War II, ended on the beaches of Omaha. He was type for Big Ruth, was an avid golfer. And it was just a joy to be back to Bristol Glen and be there in some time and visit with so many people. And at a hundred and two years old, Wally, you know, mentally, heartburn condition, no hearing, no walker, like he was better hearing than my husband. I know it's on video, sorry, Gray. But, I mean, just phenomenal details. It was like such a great experience. And he was adorable because we surprised him with a proclamation and a big cake and balloons. And says, "Here, this is the best birthday I've ever had." And I said, "Wally, you've had a hundred and two of them. I hardly believe that, you know, your dinner tonight with me is the best birthday I've ever had." But I'm so excited to spend it with you. He just, you know, I've lived all over the country and, you know, went off to war. And when I came back and I wanted to raise my family, by the way, five children, fifteen grandkids, thirty-four great-grandkids, nine great-great and three great-great great-grandkids. And he chose to do that in the town of Newton and had wonderful things to say. But what was also great was there was somebody else at a table behind him raising a hand to get my attention and I threw her. And she said, "Today's my ninety-fifth birthday." And this is my husband and in October, we've been married seventy-five years. And by the way, Wally is in better shape than he is, right? So, and then later on, the executive director says, "And we have a resident next month celebrating their hundred and second birthday as well. So could you come back and do it because you did it for one? Could you do it for the next?" So I think the water has been picking up here in town because things are thriving over at Bristol Glen. Thank you, C. Okay. And, you know, the residents just seemed really happy and the staff was great there. And it was just fun to celebrate that time with Wally. I know that Mrs. Dixon at the last council meeting made reference to this during public portion, but I just wanted to point out in the New Truth Report from September twenty-third and the Sunday paper, hopefully many of you saw the beautiful insert about the town of Newton. Twenty pages about just all the great things going here. Lots of businesses recognize some information about services that are offered in the town of Newton, highlighting a lot of our emergency responders, et cetera. So a beautiful insert and I think available online, too, for those that didn't get the hard paper. I want to congratulate everybody else who took the Ball Festival this past Sunday. Being down there, talking with lots of merchants, looking at the old cars and seeing the kids running around having a great time. Luckily, the weather cooperated, but another great time for the town of Newton to be down Spring Street this past weekend. Happy to report that town representative of town down at Douglas Housing Conference, where we had RPM Project nominated, unfortunately didn't win, but to be nominated against many wonderful projects around the state of New Jersey. It's nice for the town of Newton to get recognized. And then twenty-four or forty-eight hours later, to be notified by the New Jersey chapter of the American Penny Association, that Spring Street has been designated as a 2018 Great Street in New Jersey. So thank you to our town planner and Tom and others who came for the nomination. It was nice to get that recognition. And I know that we have a ceremony coming up. Downline a little bit in a couple of weeks to recognize all of the towns that have designated great streets in the state. So not all things necessarily get put out or made the news. So we wanted to make sure that we shared that information in a public setting. I think that's all I have for now. Deputy Mayor Flynn?
Thank you. I as well attended the Ball Festival and I thought it was really well together. I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in the planning, all the business owners. You really showcased some stuff out there. There was a nice vendor spread. Classic art participants were very enthusiastic about their displaying their hobbies. So it was really nice, you know, the weather helped it out. It was a really nice celebration. Still feels like summer, but it was a ball festival. Councilman Dixon and myself were, I went there twice, so on the way back at about two o'clock in the morning, and I've stuck through again. We were able to give out some awards for the winners of Classic Car Show, which was done by my partner. And then this past weekend, I came across, I think, a family event. I met a Newton high school student, a junior, who started this program called Weekend Bags. And the program is designed to give underprivileged students in the area of food, toiletries, and necessities for the weekend that they might not, they might not normally have resources to obtain when they're home. So, you know, if they're part of the affordable breakfast and lunch program at the school, you know, some meals are taken care of at that point in time. The weekend is a long period of time and some people are not as fortunate. So she put together this program and be sending it over to Mr. Russo. And Dr. Green, I believe, knows about it. But I want to try and see if we can get some publicity around it and see if we can, you know, help out. It's a really, it's a really great program. From what I understand, she really created it from scratch. So they've been working, we get packing bags for everybody. Several weeks ago, we had the League of Municipalities, the Sussex County League of Municipalities event at the Wolf House. We had a presentation by Sussex County College on what they intend to do over at the Wolf House. It was, if you saw or read the paper from the meeting that took place that same day at Sussex Botec, it was a very similar presentation, just given to the League of Municipalities. And there was also a very interesting presentation given by JCPenelle, who was like the director of, I want to say Community Outreach. He was there. He had a very interesting program about some new programs that they're going to be implementing as far as powerages are concerned. They're doing actual infrastructure upgrades to the poles with these new types of fuses that's supposed to expedite the hookup of power back after a severe storm. So we're in like, he also went over the areas of the state that have like the most severe powerages. And we are Sussex County, Warren County, and like northern Warren County is in, you know, their primary of outages due to the trees. So there's going to be more information. Jack, I'm just going to, from JCPenelle should be updating us on that. So I wanted to bring that. So I wanted to bring that to attention. So it was a good meeting. It was jam packed full of information. That's all I have.
Thank you. Officer DeLuca?
On Friday on October 5th, I attended the 2018 ES Awards Conference in Atlantic City, where I'm happy to report that the Newton Prestade Squad was awarded the 2018 Outstanding EMS Agency for Year for the state of New Jersey. Three of our members, John Fourcoute, Lauren Hanigan, and Pam Wilson, were also nominated for Outstanding EMS Corps. And Carla Wilson was also nominated Outstanding Hospital for All Nurse. So I'm very proud of the squad because I do belong to the squad and a lot of our members went to do three years. On Sunday, I attended the Fall Festival and I want to thank Karen for all the effort that she put into the preparation for the Fall Festival and all those that helped her. Thank you very much. It was a very beautiful affair. Thank you. And Tuesday, well, Tuesday morning, I attended Parade Committee. The Holiday Parade will be on November 24th. The theme will be Pink and Festival. Information will be coming out to all organizations tomorrow morning. We have it seen down and sending everything out. And I think that's it for now. I did go to the meeting, the chamber meeting, and a lot of discussion went on about Wizard Con. And I think we discussed that tonight, so I don't need to go into that. So.
Okay. Councilman Simon?
On October 2nd, Mayor LaFaw, Councilman Dixon, and myself attended a town hall at Sussex County College to denounce the disgusting ignorant feeding card in Henry Township Family. Just wanted to say that we will continue to stand against racism, sexism, xenophobia, and any discrimination, not only in Newton but in Sussex County as a whole. I also want to take a moment to thank Mayor LaFaw for being a positive force and stalwart leader. She was the only mayor to take a stand against these actions with our Congressman and Senator Flannin to denounce the treatment of our neighbors.
Thank you.
I attended the board of meetings on September 25th. They went over some district wide data as far as enrollment, academic achievement, academic road, student to staff ratios per pupil costs. One of the things that actually stood out to me when I was reading through it was the school funding, obviously that was an issue. It's at 60%. But if you look at the local tax levies, 2000 to 2010, it was 5.16%. And from 2010 to 2019, it was 1.78%. And that included decreases in 2012, 2018, and 2018. So, I mean, we all understand we've been fighting with our budget and they have been too. So I just think they deserve some recognition for that. The board is very appreciative of us having a meeting together. They felt like it was a very productive meeting. As, at that point at that meeting, they still hadn't heard about the preschool funding. Since that time though, it has come through that they were awarded the funding. So they will now get the money from the state to be able to write a full day preschool for the residents. So that's, that's good. The board are working towards, you know, setting that all up. As Jason alluded to, we attended the event at the college. I was honored to be able to attend that event and stand, stand there with Oro Gahimer, taking a stand and showing that no, there's no laser hate in Sussex County. On October 3rd, I stopped by for Coffee with Cop. I know the council had talked about doing something in conjunction with them and Chief Richards just expressed to me that he's very supportive of that idea. So I'd like to, like to take that role. I attended Fall Festival 12. It was great that, I remember the council was there at some point during the day. It was a fantastic event, fantastic job by all the working and organizingers. And it's, it's a lot of work. It's wonderful. The car show was an excellent edition. So, and finally, I'd like to echo Sandy's sentiments to congratulate the squad on being the outstanding EMS agency in the state of New Jersey. And also Newton PD Officer Morales in post, they were recognized for outstanding first responder. So.
If, so Tom, if we could just get the police department to schedule for the next Coffee with a Cop, try to do a cooperative, as we've discussed in the past, a cooperative event. That would be great. Coffee, chocolate, tea. Yeah. All right. Town Manager Russell, your comments?
Good things here. Fall Festival, thank you to Erin and Becky and the merchants, Tom, Dustin, the Chamber, and Kimberly Williams on my team and Police Department. All the works for a great event, a lot of fun. Both went really well, great turnout, a great number of vendors. Cars had to be turned away, so we'll be expanding the event next year. We are going to keep it on Sunday because I think Sunday will have anything for people to have something to do when they're losing. Kudos to everyone for Fall Fest. Next up, McQ Halloween Parade. Make sure you get your costumes ready. We have some more surprises and fun to the Halloween of October 1st. And sponsor Wizards event. We'll be meeting with my counterpart, CEO of Big Brother and Big Sister tomorrow. We will try to find an amicable solution on the cost and size and scope of the event because obviously there's a lot of enthusiasm on doing something. Last year was not really well organized and it was a dangerous situation because of the volume of people. But there obviously was a great benefit to, for the showcase of the town, for the merchants that were successful. So we're trying to find a way to make it a successful event from a small business Saturday strictly for the merchants, provide a safe environment for the people that visit so that when they walk away, they feel like they had a, you know, fun, fulfilling time Newton and does open their eyes to move to the town, open a business, visit. It's a showcase opportunity that I don't want to lose either. But I am guided by tax dollars. I am guided by Resolution 51, which the council adopted in February, that invented the scale. I do have to have conversations about escrow for police and public works. It was led through, spent over $20,000 for the event. It was not budgeted. Although I just appreciate the importance of having the event, I still have to manage and be able to steward the tax dollars they trust me to spend. So I will meet with Lori tomorrow in her office and keep the council posted.
Thanks for coming to my panel.
A few other items under the hashtag Make Newton Great Again tagline. I want to congratulate Kenny Teetz for his selection to the High School of Fame. I want to thank Mayor for his words about the housing conference, although unsuccessful and proud that the RPM Project was nominated for statewide work. I go to sentiments about the New Jersey MS Conference, kudos to Prestade and also to Officer Morales in post. Wanted to mention that we did see another more recognition from Transoptions for Gold Level Recognition in the New Jersey Smart Places Program for Outstanding Achievement Creating Programs that provides remote commuting options for employees. We got that award. And we're also highlighted in our annual report for fiscal year 18 with the Six Streets Campaign just included. I want to echo Mayor's sentiments about the Great Street. Actually, if I could give a little context, the email that we received from actually the mayor of South Orange, who runs the Planning Association, says, on behalf of the New Jersey chapter of the American Planning Association, I'm so very pleased to share that Spring Street in Newton has received the distinguished honor being designated a 2018 Great Street in New Jersey. It's launched in 2012. Great places in New Jersey recognized as unique and exemplary downtown public spaces, streets, and neighborhoods for central components of a special community. These places thrive as testaments to forward-thinking planning that promotes community involvement, showcases unique natural features and diverse architectural styles, fosters economic opportunity, and inspires a vision for tomorrow. Your nomination was very compelling and can certainly serve as a blueprint for other communities to emulate. Needless to say, each year, the awards jury faces the daunting task of reviewing many high-quality nominations that embody strong planning principles and success stories, but yours stood out. This year, five new great places have joined the ranks of 30 other special locations throughout the state and are featured and celebrated on our interactive map with pictures and descriptions of Great Place New Jersey dot com. And three weeks, we will be invited to the event celebrating our achievement. Great Place New Jersey reception is at the South Orange Performing Arts Center located in the LA Denny Town Hall. So that is the information on that. One of the recognition that I'm grateful for is I'm receiving an award from C. Hall for my honor for the marketing project we did with the students in the Stellman School of Business. We're being recognized as the town of Newton along with the United States Army and Mark Pharmaceutical Order of Health Division on Thursday, April 11th. There will be a video on me and the town and we will be invited to the event. So grateful for that honor.
So Tom, by way of background, if you could just tell people what the project was?
Yes, so we worked with students in the Stellman School of Business and the other type of programs to coordinate marketing survey and to do some other investigation as to where we are with marketing and events. And the planning that went into that and the work that went into that actually created the impetus for Kimberly coming on board in her role for community development, had conversations about some additional events that we're hoping to plan in the future, price points, and other kind of marketing needs for the town. So it was really, you know, from my alma mater now as an adjunct professor there, it was a really cool thing to go back to be normal and work with the students. And it was a great honor that they were recognized. I presented out of the event.
So if my colleagues will extend a professional courtesy, I have a couple of comments. And I want to come back to a challenge I issued each of you on July 1st, where at the three-month checkpoint, I'm kind of big on checking in when we establish goals. What I asked each of you to do was be prepared at council meetings with the work just to discuss and iterate and promote the work that's done in between council meetings and the various boards and commissions that you all attend, events that you attend on behalf of the town. And I think that not only have you all come prepared, everybody brings a little bit of something different to the discussion, but I think what this has allowed us to do is be a little more transparent, a little more communicative, have some discussions about things that are going on that sometimes not even the rest of us know about. And certainly lots of things that go unnoticed by the public because we don't promote that. Second to that, the other thing that I challenged every day on, on July 1st was to do a better job of promoting the news and the good things that are going on in the town of Newton. And certainly the updates tonight were filled with lots of information about things that are going on. And that's not to say that we don't have our challenges and we're not always trying to improve and make things better. Certainly, everyone's getting a feeling tonight of, you know, some of the good things that don't always make the herald or tap. And that's not a criticism. I know you have finite amount of space to print, but, you know, certainly by us having our meetings out taped, it's all information going on public record. And I wasn't going to bring it up, but thank you, Councilman Dixon and Councilman Schlapfer, for referring to the press conference that was at the County Community College a week ago Monday, or a week ago Tuesday. And I was honored to be, to receive a call from Congressman Gahimer's office as well as Senator Oro's office, asking if I would make a comment on behalf of mayors in Sussex County and certainly the town of Newton being the county seat about the terrible racist, hateful things that the Philly and Hampton have undergone by having a political sign in their yard. And I know that our newspapers of our grade have covered this information. But, you know, in addition to Congressman Gahimer and Senator Oro, and we had the prosecutor speaking and a student from Sussex County Community College and lots of other people spoke. And we all had one message about the fact that every, this is not a political issue, that hate does not have a place in Sussex County. We're not going to tolerate it. One of my comments was that what happens in one municipality affects all municipalities in Sussex County. And so it was great. I think they had expected about 30 people to turn out and there were probably at least 100 people that turned out in addition to the local news sources, Channel 12 and Channel 7. And I was so surprised how many people watch Channel 12, quite frankly, given the comments that I had of the next few days. But grateful that the town of Newton was able to represent municipal government, have their municipalities. And I know that the Sheriff's Department, along with selective insurance, where one, we're actually the family.
We're going to come back to order fees. So up next, we have a couple of items for discussion, including a master plan revision and the permitted uses in the SD3 zone. We're going to have those sessions led by Jessica. Hold on a minute, Karen. Hi, Jessica.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As you said, I'm here tonight to discuss an update to the master plan required by Ms. Boland, who's over 10 years. We need to at least reexamine the master plan. The last time we had a complete update was 2008. So we're in the year where we're starting to take a look at it. And a reexamination doesn't mean that we're going to reinvent the wheel. I think that we did, as many of you recall, we did quite a large update. At the last time, we sort of switched the way we look at zoning. We moved to form-based code where we have a compact downtown and move out from the center of town. So we recommended changes to ordinance and ordinance was dated in 2012. So it's really only been, you know, about six years that the ordinance has been in place. So I think that what we're really looking at is revisions, tweaking around the edges, looking at what's working, what's not working. We've gotten good feedback from the zoning officer in terms of implementing the ordinances. And we've been tracking things as they go through planning board to see, you know, where some of the, sometimes it's just things you don't expect and happen as you're implementing a new ordinance. So I think we can, we clean it up because part of the master plan reexamination, part of it's looking at, you know, our demographics, our data, and census data, if anything's changed, and look at our policies and our general land use policy, if it still fit, you know, what's going on in the municipality. And I think to a large extent, it will. We've already started pulling some census data. Interestingly, 2010 showed about a 3% loss of population in the town, whereas the county was still growing at that point. But since then, now in 2016, the county is showing a 3% loss. Whereas Newton's about still status quo and isn't really, you know, it's like a 0.2% loss. It was basically statistically even. So I think the town is tracking a little different, maybe a little ahead of the county in terms of the population loss and hopefully starting to come back. And I think that's in part due to our land use policies. So I think, you know, what we're looking at is just checking to make sure that we're still on track. We're also looking at the ordinance to make some changes, you know, where needed and just fine tune things. So I'm happy to take any input from the council in terms of if you see things or have ideas. It doesn't have to be tonight. Certainly can reach out to me or, you know, through Tom, reach out and know that we're in the process of doing a update. Most likely to be working with, we have a technical review committee of the planning board, which is sort of an existing subcommittee of the planning board. So rather than creating a new subcommittee, we'll most likely be working with that committee just to develop the reexamination report. And then that goes through the planning board for adoption. And then obviously, everything comes to the council for, you know, recommendations for changes to ordinances. So you would look to next year, you'll probably have a pretty good sized list of things that the planning board recommends. And obviously, everything's up to, you know, your decision in terms of anything you want to know.
Yeah, so just a couple of comments because in 2008, I think there were only two, no, 2010. Oh, so it's just me. So 2008, when we underwent that process, I mean, it was, it was a big process. We knew that we needed to address some big issues related to our, to our master plan. And we did a master plan rewrite. We went to the transx zoning. We got input from stakeholders and constituents and had lots of meetings and it was a lot of work. And I think since then, what we've seen is that it has been, has been proven to be a good plan for the town in the way that we've outlined, whether it's development of businesses and residential or the special zones, you know, to the college, the hospital, and others. It certainly has been supportive of various redevelopment efforts and it's streamlined a lot of processes at the planning board level. So, you know, I wanted to reiterate what Jessica started by saying is that every 10 years, we have, are required to do an update or a review, and that's according to Ms. Boland using the law. And, you know, certainly input from the planning board is important for those of you that haven't looked at our master plan. But I would encourage you to do that just to see if there's anything that we want to discuss further and know that over the last 10 years, we have made adjustments and changes as, you know, things come up. Because as you mentioned, you can't, you don't have a crystal ball or a magic mirror to look at what, you know, businesses, for example, might want to come in, right? So when we did the
So when we did the change of zoning to allow for the tattoo shop, you know, that wasn't something that was anticipated back in 2008. And so those are changes that we may kind of as we go. But this 10-year review is required by law and it's going to be ongoing process. But, you know, please do take a look at that. And Jessica is always a great resource. By the way, I noticed that the building is almost filled. You have almost all your tenants filled, I noticed on Sunday, right? So, yeah, so, you know, I'm sure you're going to be coming back to the council after you meet with the TRC and get input from others.
So we'll be looking at a lot of goals and objectives. That's one of the places to start if you're looking at the master plan. And if you have ideas about things that the council's been talking about and that you have specific goals that are coming to mind, certainly if you want to share those with me and the committee, that would be great. Also, just in terms of knowing the background, I think what the mayor said is true. In 2005, 2006, there were really large public involvement sessions that were a precursor to the master plan. And since then, we've also held, I think in 2010, and then again in 2012, a lot of public involvement sessions for feedback on our circulation plan element. And then we did a downtown vision plan. So, you know, all of those have kind of been ongoing, feeding into the master plan. This 10-year review is a good time to just take a look and see, you know, what's changing. And I think we're on a good track and I think the plan is a good plan for the town and it's just really trying to fine tune it.
I think it also gives us the opportunity to look at trends and changes on the landscape of planning in general, right?
Yes.
And that's where your expertise comes in and, you know, you staying on top of what's going on. I mean, that was partially and in part why we looked at going to transect zoning was because that was, you know, best practice for a town such as ours, limited square miles and the mixed use of all the properties in the town. But the other thing that's, I think, critically important to the process is that environmental scan, right? So how has demographics changed? How has, you know, the businesses changed, census changed? And from that, we get a lot of information about, you know, from a planning perspective, what's going on in town, which enables us to do, you know, future planning and potentially help each to.
Yeah, I think a lot has changed since 2008 in terms of trends and land use, but I think there are good trends for Newton because a lot more people are looking to locate in more urban type areas where they can walk to places where there's, you know, smaller homes and not larger lots. And having a couple of water and public tour is positive for development right now. So I think all of those things, a lot of the trending changes since 2008 are good for the town. I think we're just going to start seeing them soon. It's not, you know, we're kind of still on the edge of it. But, you know, 2008 was sort of, you know, when the market fell and, you know, a lot of things were changing at that time. And there was population loss, which is interesting to me, a little earlier in the town of Newton than in the county as a whole. But I think because the trend is well as neutral, it's hopefully shifting back to growth.
Jessica, could we be incorporating the green infrastructure in the new vision?
Yes, absolutely. We met with Louise Wilson from New Jersey Future, and she's, and her team has recommended some changes to some of our stormwater management and just some general policies about trying to encourage green infrastructure with new developments. She gave us some resources for that and we're going to continue to work with her. And Tom's, you know, asked us to set up a meeting with them again to continue to incorporate those recommendations and changes.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor Flynn was able to meet with her and then the two of us were able to meet with her and some others when we were down taking a look at the rain garden at memory park a couple of weeks ago. And she also said that there have been some legislative changes around green infrastructure that we should, or want lots to be interested in hearing about as we look at the master plan update. So I think that's all timely conversation.
So a couple of things that come to my mind, I think we were a little bit ahead of the curve with the transect zoning. I still haven't heard of a town that's went to a full transect zoning before in New Jersey. A lot of towns will do these like little redevelopment zones and applied transect zoning. One of the things that, that I think we kind of missed a little bit in the 08 master plan was something that really came to fruition when we were analyzing the development of the McGuire site. And it was all about putting, you know, people that live, putting feet on the street with people that live in a two to four minute walk of the downtown. I feel like it was more centered on commercial and businesses and redevelopment where I know it permits apartment buildings to a certain height, but, you know, a lot of developers give us criticism, like there's just not critical mass here to influence someone to even make an investment in a commercial property of like, especially anything that has to do with a chain, who's like demographic analysis to determine where, you know, it's just not that, that many people that like live, this isn't like their backyard. So I think that that should be analyzed a bit more thoroughly.
Okay.
I know it's permitted, but, you know, if there's.
I think that's a good point. I think there's been a lot of focus on the commercial in the downtown because that's always, you know, been an issue for Spring Street and trying to encourage commercial and maybe not as much focus on how to get more residential there. Because retail has changed a lot. It's just more difficult to fill the spaces and there may be ways to encourage more residential to offset that. And really, the way to encourage more retail now is to have more people. And, you know, encouraging more people who live in the downtown and creating more spaces for people to live in the downtown. Like it's this automatic 24-hour venue for everyone to, you know, they're going to shop at places that are, you know, right around the corner.
Yeah, I think we thought that people were going to come if there was a lot of businesses and they had this mindset that like, it's just going to draw people from outside, but that's not exactly the case these days. There's, now, I mean, there's, I can't even count the number of working professionals and people living on the street in market rate apartments. But in 08, there was, there was none.
There was none. Well, and don't forget that before we did the master plan update, apartments weren't permitted on Spring Street over. So that was one, that was one of the big changes. I mean, there was, there was a time where that, you know, the thought process was that, you know, the apartments were, you know, section eight or, you know, had a bad element or maybe they were SROs, like single room occupancy, trying to sort of move those out, which is, the idea was just make them not permitted and that offices would locate over. And that just didn't happen and ended up with a lot of actual vacant space just over commercial, like the style shop got renovated. There was nothing over that commercial space before we redid the master plan and then put in eight apartments. And now there's eight beautiful apartments there, market rate, you know, gorgeous, you know, all hardwood, nicely done, where people can live now and frequent the downtown, you know, people who would be able to shop and be able to afford this by owning the downtown.
Yeah, I think the density analysis is going to be key because we've had two, you know, unofficial kind of case studies, right? So you have the RPM building, which is now full and the style shop, eight units above full at market rate. And, you know, there's, if you're on Spring Street on Sunday at the Hall Festival, yeah, leading, right? So we, you know, we have a couple of buildings where developers have invested money and that those apartments are at market rate. And, you know, young professionals that are, that are moving in, that are employed locally and are able to walk or bike to the little house or wherever. And I think we're going to see a few others, just from what I've heard from some developers interested. So, you know, I think that we have some adult information now to kind of support some of those changes.
I think on the residential scale, we want to look at allowing people to maximize the small lots that they have through, a lot of people want outdoor generators now. There's like offsets that might need to change to accommodate outdoor generators. If someone could improve the house, there's an addition to a house, that's something that they might want to do. Accessory dwellings, looking at, you know, detached garages. I know they're, I know they are permitted, but I don't exactly know what the offsets are to allow people to maximize the use of the lot. Maybe like, I'm just talking, thinking at the same time, but like if there's any restrictions on grading, you know, small amounts of grading, small retaining walls, those should be like incorporated into, I would think more of a permitted use of people to maximize. You might only have a 40 by 8 lot, but if you want to, if you want to grow and have a family, you want to be able to, you might need a two, like a double with driveway, you might need to put a garage, things like that.
Yeah, we kind of have issues with the way that the parking's addressed in the ordinance. You know, we had very lofty ideas about all the parking being behind everything in the way. Some of the lots are just so small, it's just really, people can't do it. And they end up in a situation where they either can't add space to park, you know, they can't expand a driveway or add a driveway and they, they just have no other option besides the variance, which is expensive, so usually they don't do it. So I think that's good input in terms of allowing people to sort of be able to get the most they can out of the small lots that do exist in the town.
Because people that want to move here, they're going to be like, oh, I could eventually in like four or five years if I wanted to put a garage there, but I can't put a 15 foot of property line, I can only put a five.
Right.
So, you know, looking at things like that and the variance just scares people away.
Yep.
Things could find their way. Who wants a rough issue about parking down the street and mixed up places that allow people to be creative in their parking situation.
Yeah.
You know, even actually on the planning board level, we did allow, there was one house that.
The conversation right now about it.
Oh, yeah, that's right. It's still, but there was just no parking available for this house.
I think it's tough. I mean, you know, the town developed a long time ago and people didn't have cars at one point, so there really wasn't a space put on the lot for the cars.
Yeah, no driveway.
Yeah, this, yeah, this house is, yeah, no driveway.
You know, it was about, no removal in the winter, they can't park on the street at night even. It just, it's tough. So I think we need to be more creative and flexible with that in order to just let people, you know, get their cars out to the street and have a good place to park.
Well, that's the whole intent of the, every 10-year would be required to.
Right. I mean, it took some time just to kind of see how it was going.
Absolutely.
That's all good input and thank you. And I welcome, you know, send any other ideas to Tom and look at them to me.
Anything else for Ms. Caldwell about the master plan revision of the, okay. So we're going to stay with you and move to the permitted uses in the SD3 zone, which we had neighbors talk about.
This item is, is one of those sort of, you know, tweaking and refining. When we did revise ordinances, we created a special district for areas within the town. And the particular area that we're talking about, SD3, sort of encompasses Water Street, you know, all along 206 where you have, you know, Dr. Jones' and Walgreens and Home Depot. And so you have a lot of big commercial uses and that does wrap around to Mill Street. So that zone did not permit single-family residential, primarily focused on commercial uses, which bulk of the zone really is. But there is a spot on Water Street where there's a row of houses and there's a couple other places where there are some existing single-family residential. And taking a look at it, it was brought to the council and there are some, you know, people who like their homes there, want to stay there, they're having some problems with financing because when you become a not permitted use, well, your grandfather did and you can stay there, you know, as long as, if something happens to your house, say it burns down, you can't automatically rebuild it. You can go to the planning board and get approval to rebuild it, but mortgage companies don't necessarily like that because that doesn't mean that you can automatically, you know, recoup your investment if needed. So that was the issue that was brought to us. And, you know, we can incorporate this into the master plan process, but we did put forward an ordinance for the council to consider. I don't think it's in conflict with the master plan to send it to the planning board for review. I don't think it necessarily is because what it really does is just allow existing single-family to remain as permitted uses. Sort of, sort of the idea of allowing just single families permitted uses, but really don't want to introduce more single family into that zone. I think that existing is fine, can work where it is, but to have additional, let's say someone tried to subdivide a lot and do single family on 206 is just not really what we're looking for. Not that they would, but you don't want to open the door. So it's really just to permit existing to remain, they can be rebuilt, and they would go under the bulk standards of the zone that they were in prior to the adoption of this ordinance if, say, it was burnt down and needed to be rebuilt. Because the new zoning standards still reflect single families, so we want to be able to give them an option to rebuild. And I believe they were R2 primarily before the new zone came in, so they would be able to rebuild under the R2 standards of the old ordinance.
So Water Street wrapping around to Mill Street through North Park.
Right.
Right. So it's the houses that are from that corner all the way up to PSS?
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically that, yeah.
No, but then Water Street too.
There's a few over bumping, by memory park, I think, there's a few residential back though that are also in the same zone.
Correct, that's true.
So I didn't want to leave them out either. We just looked at the ones on Mill Street and then later on, people in that area had an issue and figured we just cover everyone in the zone. Because most of the other zones allow some type of residential, so they would be able to, you know, rebuild under, under existing ordinance.
So the council received a draft copy of the ordinance and the question or the discussion in their packet. So do we have any questions regarding specific language or anything like that that you recognized in prep for tonight's meeting that you want to discuss with Jessica? Knowing what she does, all right, so I think we're good to move forward with that. And this is how the process is supposed to work, right?
Right.
So active community members bring it to attention and we make the adjustments. So appreciate everybody participating in the process. And this is an example, as I mentioned before, that as things come up, you know, we've been updating the zoning and master plan as we do.
Sounds always very responsive. It's just, you can't think of that many.
Can't foresee everything else.
I think making the change to allow office space on the first floor of Spring Street was a very good idea because you were, you were able to take advantage of that to fill a vacant space. And, you know, it's open for anybody else to do that. But I think, you know, that was something in 08 that was like, it was get the office on the second floor, but now, you know, I think it's, it's, because it's like really, it's all inclusive. If you're going to have an office and retail in the same establishment, you can really like, it can be done.
Yeah.
I think your, you did stuff like that with Phil.
So Deputy Mayor Flynn, you're referring back to the first discussion item of the master plan.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
That was an example of tweaking around the edges as we went down.
Just wanted to clarify for, because we have people in the audience that are interested obviously about the S3, SD3 zone, and we will have another public comment, I see, I'd like to do a mark to discuss.
Could you give us like a easy bunch of words on what you're doing?
So, because this specifically refers to your property, so I'll use you as an example, Mr. and Mrs. Pomerantz.
You could use me.
You know, as it stands right now, if, God forbid, something should happen to your house and there was a fire, you would not be permitted to rebuild your individual, single dwelling home as it stands right now, right? You would have to come to the planning board, you would have to ask for a variance. It's a little bit of a lengthy process. And so what we're doing now, the proposed ordinance is going to fix that and correct it because you already grandfathered in, but the language isn't as clear to the ability for you to rebuild should something happen. And so we're just tightening that up, in other words.
And that includes all, I'm sorry.
That's, you know what? I'm going to have you come back up to the microphone for the session. I want to make sure that we're following the rules, but that little synopsis, Jessica, if you want to add anything.
No, I, so, yeah, anyone would, it would be permitted use, which just means that you can, for a single family, you come and get a building permit if something happened to your home and you needed to rebuild part or all of it. And the standards would be to the ones that were in place before this ordinance was adopted. So if you did need a variance from that, then, you know, you did, but you can, you know, move your home or what have you, and it should line up pretty well, I think, with existing homes.
Right, to rebuild in kinds.
Yeah. Yeah, so there shouldn't be any issues once, it would need to be introduced, a sense of planning board for review and then second reading.
And my suggestion is send it to planning board because it's on November meeting, you know.
And there's a planning board meeting in a week, so.
So we'll get this to Kathy tomorrow if we can.
Yeah, yeah.
For Wednesday, it comes back to you guys to introduce.
And then you don't have to refer it in between, you can just do first and second reading. reading.
Right, because we have a planning board meeting. So, in addition to that, we will be expediting the process so that this happens before year end.
Okay.
Um, so Jessica, I'm gonna ask you to just kind of, um, hold tight and stay here, even though we have another discussion item, in case that we have, in case we have some questions in the next public session for you to answer, if that's okay.
All right.
Right? Mr. Ferry. Next up, we're gonna be talking about, um, water sewer connection fees, um, and so we have, uh, with us tonight, our town owner, Tom Ferry. Um, and for, uh, new council members and the public certification, uh, we are required to do an annual analysis of our water sewer connection fees, so, Tom, I'm gonna ask you to give a little bit of background of the process and where we're at, and then I'm sure you'll follow up then with your findings.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, as the mayor mentioned, uh, this is an annual process that, um, is required, not required, but is required, required to be done after the adoption of your budget. And what it basically is, is a recalculation of your connection fee for your water and sewer. Uh, what this means is that, um, people that are already connected have been paying basically for the debt service and for the improvements that have been made throughout all these years. These people that are connecting now basically got a free ride, and the people that have been connected have been paying their share. So, what this does is basically, it's a recalculation in accordance with, uh, state law, uh, forty-eight, colon, thirty-one, dash, eleven. It's a very specific, uh, set of rules. Um, it basically tells me as the accountant auditor that if you take A multiplied times B divided by C, you come up with a number. It's very specific. Um, so it was, um, two years ago, I had it play, I did a catch-up that hasn't been done for a while. Um, Mr. Russo asked me to update it as of, uh, the latest numbers, which I basically used two thousand and seventeen water and sewer user numbers, uh, by gallons and by the number of, uh, users. And the reason why is because I don't want to estimate eighteen, I want actual numbers. So, the numbers that we use for, um, calculation for the water and sewer are average, are, are actual numbers for two thousand and seventeen, and the expenditures are for two thousand and sixteen. Um, so based upon all of those numbers, I come up with the new debt service, I, um, add in new improvements, I've used the previous years, I come up with a new number, we update it, so this year I had to do an update of sixteens and I didn't update a seventeens, even though I really didn't need to, but I just wanted to go back and make sure those numbers are comparable. Um, so that's basically in a nutshell, I know it gets, it gets a little more complicated than that, but, um, that's, uh, you have a handout, I'm sorry, you have a handout, and I basically, um, state kind of like in plain English, the law, how it's calculated, and then I move on to the actual calculations themselves for water connection fees, um, based upon.
Tom, one second, does everyone have that document, it's in our shared, um, okay, so I'm sure everybody's moving on, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. So, we have the water connection fee calculation, and all those numbers come from backing schedules that were attached, um, and the sewer connection fees, I also have the water and sewer usage numbers, I also have the expenditure numbers for the water since, um, I put my glasses on for this one, uh, nineteen eighty-nine, two thousand and sixteen. So, um, I went back to nineteen eighty-nine because I think that was the year, um, that we actually had it redone, um, with the pre- previous administration. How was it here then?
No, was I?
So, um, that's pretty much it in, in a nutshell. Um, if you go to, I don't think, I don't know if they're page numbered. Um, so, for the, um, the water connection calculation, we have connection fee per service unit of three thousand seven fifty-nine, and for the sewer connection fee, uh, the connection fee per service unit is six thousand and eleven dollars. So, those are the newest and bestest numbers that we have.
So, Mr. Ferry, can you just, um, clarify for the public that these are new connections and that not going to be a change to?
Yeah, this is not a water and sewer rate based upon your rate. This is businesses or new development that have not been connected to the sewer, that are in the sewer service area, um, that they get charged this fee, again, to pay for the people or to defer the cost of the people that have been paying all those years for the debt service for improvements, for the actual infrastructure and for improvements. Um, this money goes into the budget and it helps defer the user fees for the people moving forward.
So, just to be clear, this is on new water sewer connections and what is delineated to identify residential, residential.
You say defer the fees, generally the, the fees, uh, were, were the same for many years, they recently went up due to a study that they did in twenty sixteen, because they needed to, because their budget didn't support the infrastructure improvements that were needed, but they're really not going to go down, right? You know what I'm saying, like, unless, I mean, unless you were, unless there would be so much development off, but that, that.
It's a possibility.
It would offset the budget, but then you would have to make an improvement to the sewer that would, that would.
Offset.
Defer debt service.
Exactly, yeah, so it, it, you're, you're right, you're right, maybe I used the incorrect term, but it does bring in additional revenues, um, to help support it instead of defer, support, uh, the water and sewer, um, revenues.
Yeah, and then directly be used for improvements, which would pay for in cash, generally rather than debt service on the water and sewer side.
Yes, and we should be reminded, based on the presentation at the last meeting, we know, um, that we have some projected expenditures that are becoming, that are being suggested to water sewer infrastructure and, um, some work that's going to have to be done and, uh, has been itemized out over the next ten years, so, you know, we already know that, that's coming down.
Emphasize the importance of looking at this and adjusting the fees, uh, and be prepared for all that stuff. Tom, do you happen to have the old total fee number, water sewers around eighty-four-hundred?
No, the old number, I believe, eighty-three.
I have the twelve.
Ninety-three hundred.
No, the, the old number before we did the change in twenty sixteen. No, you just talked, you just said it last, last meeting.
Well, no, when we did ordinance twenty sixteen, seventeen, it was ninety-three thirty-five.
Ninety-three thirty-five, I believe it was eighty-four on here before that.
And then going forward, we'll see that ninety-seven seventy. So, that's the increase over the past few years.
So, I mean.
Yeah, it used to be eighty-four hundred, the old is, from eighty-four hundred to ninety-three-hundred.
Yeah, ninety-six.
Ninety-seven, which is so less than the other towns at the time of the last meeting.
Any other questions, Mr. Ferry? So, I know that you, on a side note, have been busy, and I know that we're starting to work on budgets for next year, and Dawn is, uh, crunching numbers, and Tom's starting to meet with all the department heads, right? So, we look forward to seeing you back again in the February timeframe as we look at the budget.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tom? Okay.
Thank you.
That concludes, um, the three, uh, scheduled discussion items that we have on tonight's agenda. Um, so at this point, I am going to reopen the meeting to the public, um, same rules apply as last time, uh, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, uh, five minutes, prepared statement, please, feel it to the clerk.
Ralph Ford, Top Pine Street. First of all, I want to thank the new EMS, two weeks ago tonight, I was in the hospital, they were, they were actually to the hospital, they were excellent, excellent crew. The three members who came were the three members that she mentioned, that she, uh, we're doing with that excellent. Firehouse has come on very well, and really happy, hopefully they still comes, because it's gonna be blocked, uh, and blocked tomorrow, it's gonna be blocked, you won't get that before, you know, you know that, and I know that, so I hope that goes good. The street cleaning has been excellent on this, you know, for the last year and a half, it's been excellent, we haven't had it like it in several years. Um, one question I have was the parade. Um, I'm working with a woman from the personal restless church for, we want to have a bicycle, I, I told you about that before, a bicycle and, uh, stroller, post, physical decorating contest. The chairman of commerce has agreed to it. We want to have a police officer just to make sure they're safe and ready on the road so it don't have any accidents, you'd be able to supply a police officer for that?
Yeah, we're around the border, so we can, we can do that.
Okay, very good, thank you very much.
They're gonna be there anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Kimberly coordinated that.
Okay, excellent, okay, thank you. Have a good day.
Mel Dennison, President of the Greater New Chapter Congress, business owner on eighteen Church Street. Uh, I just wanted to make some comments, you know, based on the fact of the meeting that happened last Thursday that has created quite a ruckus, and hopefully this meeting that's happening tomorrow is really, the town is going to have an open mind, uh, so definitely considerations to be given, because this, this, uh, really started back prior to May, many of the people that are not on the board, your council today, were at many of those meetings, the past mayor, the deputy mayor, they knew of all the things that are now all becoming up as surprises and changes at the last minute, seven weeks before the event. Kind of, uh, a major, uh, decision that you guys made when you, when you kind of said that, and hopefully this meeting tomorrow will change that, because there's a number of people that are sitting in this room right now that have expended a ton of time and a lot of money, because these people have not already found out any purchases that are going to be used at the event, and it would be a great injustice that this event doesn't happen to these businesses, because they've got lost money then, it's, and the time that they could have devoted to other things in their businesses. So, hopefully, uh, this meeting tomorrow really does generate something, you know, positive and that we do have this event work. Uh, you know, if it doesn't, this event is going to go somewhere else, and the attraction is going to be taken away from Newton to another town, probably. Uh, you know, I, you know, we, it's not just going to disappear, uh, and, and I think you guys know that, 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 that can happen. So, I really wanted to make sure that we, again, have an open mind when you sit down tomorrow morning and make sure that we can try and make this event work. Uh, the second thing I wanted to bring up was something that I brought up at, uh, meetings earlier this year, uh, and that is in regards to Halsted Street. Uh, I'd like to know if the town has looked at the situation there at all, I've, you know, obviously, nothing's been done to change the problem, but ever since we had the redirection of Spring Street, it has caused major traffic problems on that street. Uh, I will tell you that probably one out of every fifteen times, if, if, if I'm, if I'm lucky, I'm able to drive down that street without having to pull off between cars and by driveways so that the cars can come to the other direction. Uh, I think we're just waiting for a major accident to happen, and because this is officially on record, I think the town may share in some liability at the time that this happens, because I'm sure the people are gonna go back after the town and say, hey, you guys knew about this problem, you've chosen to, uh, hopefully not ignore it, but I've heard nothing further, I know I brought it up probably at two meetings, one earlier this year and one late last year. Uh, nothing has ever been said back to me personally, but I, and I don't know that anything's come up to committee, but obviously, uh, if you have any decision, obviously is that you're not going to do anything, so I don't know which that is, whether they, whether it went by the wayside and you have forgotten about it, or chosen to forgot, forget about it, or hopefully you'll revisit that before something happens. Thank you.
I just figured I'd pop up and clarify anything that I heard a couple of people asking about the Wizard.
Me and I just.
Oh, sorry. IKEA Burkhart, um, Twenty Ryerson Avenue, this is owner of Farrell House. Um, last year, when the Harry Potter event went on, we basically, I think as most people know, it kind of went viral ten days before the event. And so after that, we've been trying to organize a way to hopefully keep that momentum going, but be a little bit more structured and set up in the way that we were doing it. Um, one of the things we realized pretty early on is that if we were going to have any sort of scaled event that day, what we would need is more volunteers and people to help run it and organize it. We were all stuck in our businesses and basically nobody could get out and mon- monitor the street. That's where Big Brothers, Big Sisters stepped in, and they wanted to work on this as a fundraiser for their, like, their organization. They're a good organization, they would provide a lot of volunteers to help make sure that that structure and setup in an organization is, like, down pat, and we can all focus on, on our businesses and make sure that we can keep things running smoothly on our end and they can make sure things run smoothly on the street end. Um, so we've been working for a while to get this set up. Big Brothers, Big Sisters has put a lot of time, energy, effort, and money into making sure that this event is well organized and well set up. They've hired a PR term, uh, PR team to make sure that, um, in terms of copyright, that we won't be sued, that the town is covered. Their insurance is current street, they have a bunch of volunteers setting things up and making sure that, um, everything is, they've, everything's like, pretty much set and ready to go. Um, originally, we, they were told, or we were told, that we could sell tickets for every parking stock lot, or every parking spot that was secured, you could sell two-point-five tickets. They secured seven thousand parking spots, which means seventeen thousand five hundred tickets. Um, apparent, um, in the meeting that happened, that reduced to seven thousand tickets, and they were saying that there needs to be a twenty thousand dollar, uh, fee put into escrow so that, um, for the police, D W, fire department, EMS, et cetera, et cetera. I totally understand that, I as a business owner do not want to be a burden on the taxpayers, they also pay my bills. Um, I completely get that, but I, the fact that this escrow came up just last week, seven weeks before the event, that twenty thousand dollar bill needs to be put out is a little burden, and it seems like it's a little, it seems like it's almost set up to make it so it, it's almost impossible for Big Brothers, Big Sisters to be able to make that event happen with that short of notice and that big of a bill. Um, so I just want to say, going into the meeting tomorrow, you know, that they're willing to meet somewhere in the middle, I'm hoping that we can maybe set something up so that you guys can also meet somewhere in the middle. Thank you very much.
Good job.
First of all, I want to really thank, um, all of your staff and team to help us with the problem. I'm Chris Hansen, I'm one sixty-one Mill Street. I bought a house without any indication whatsoever that it was a commercial district. There was no indication in place. Uh, none of our neighbors knew about it, um, and so all of a sudden, I found out I bought the house cash, and I knew I had to rehab the whole house, it's almost twenty-one hundred square feet, but every single inch needs work on it. Uh, so this was a huge disadvantage when I found out. First of all, it's uninsurable to the full value, you know, I must keep a low profile for my insurance company, but because it's not residential, this is really, it was really a huge issue, but it was impossible to get a loan against it, so I have, it's kind of like a farmer, you know, I'm land rich, right, but no cash flow, so I truly appreciate that you understand that it was tweaking that needed to be done and you're gonna expedite it. What I don't understand, and I'm not overly obtuse, I'm just not quite getting it, but, um, what I think, or what I read is not what I think you said. So, what it says in here in section five, the effective date, is it says, first of all, um, today, I would have thought this was the first reading, but apparently it's not. So, it needs to go to the planning board, which is not even listed on here, and so you're expediting getting into the planning, and you're gonna reduce it so it's not gonna be to, to, uh, readings, right? Is that what I got? So, where it says November twenty-sixth, is that really gonna be November twenty-sixth?
Yes.
So, it's still gonna be the November sixth that it should get approved, right?
Yeah, what happens is, this is going to the planning board next week, because there is November meeting, they'll discuss it, I assume they'll approve it, the council will introduce it at the October twenty-second meeting, it'll get advertised. We don't actually meetings in November because it's only today, we have one, so that meeting at the end of November would be the signing reading, public hearing.
So, I'm just gonna be very parochial about it, the bottom line is, November twenty-sixth it happens, it's effective, I can get my letter to the loan, please, so they will actually then be able to get moved forward with the loan, because it's all being held up, I mean, I've been at this for four and a half months. So, is that correct? It's gonna say exactly what it says, which means it can be rebuilt on the current site, which is what the issue is. which is what the issue is.
It's right that, you know, the planning board approves and then the council approves and you have a process. That's, that's law, governed by law. Um, but, you know, or the positive.
Right. Well, that's what the words say.
Well, it won't be, it won't be codified on that day, but you'll have an ordinance to show.
That's all I need.
An adopted ordinance that you can show.
That's all I need, right? Okay. And then I just want to give some, some just general comments as being a newcomer. Nothing to do with my issue that I came to about, but, um, I think Pastor Tom would appreciate this kind of way. It's important sometimes to go into your business meetings or your documentation or your websites or whatever communication skills you have. And I know you said you work with Seton Hall. But what I said, if they don't know, you're a little clincher. I'm, you know, I'm electrical engineer, so I understand acronyms better than anybody. You're talking about them like everybody understands them. I would comment, especially when you have something that was as, as grossly unresponsible in another town, that we would have some idea. I will tell you, I do not take a newspaper and it's going to be offensive to somebody, but my husband was killed getting a newspaper. He was killed. So I don't carry a newspaper. You know, what I depend on is social media. What I look at is the alert alerts. What I'm saying, either I'm not signed up as a newcomer to the right, right social media because I'm used to a Morris Township, a Morris Town, being blast emails for the good stuff and the bad stuff, trees are down, knock down, as well as events. So I didn't even know about some of these events. And how I was finding out were by the signs on the outside, going up and down, you know, over by Walmart and so forth. But sometimes you're using nomenclature that you expect everybody already understands. And people, you know, like me, are new. And I said, I'm not overly obtuse. I try to catch on fairly quickly. But please, I think you need to consider when you're introducing a subject you think everybody knows, context is really important. That's all I want to, no, I'm done. So that was just not, I'm nothing bad, but I'm just thinking you need to take consideration.
Okay, so we will close the, uh, second public portion of the meeting. Additional council and manager points, Tom.
Yeah, just real quick, I have to talk about some of these emergencies that are here. Um, the idea of a main and fourth space theme event. I have several moving quality laser swords that I might geek out about. Um, we meant to talk about that a little bit a while ago, but I, you guys are here, just want to talk the idea out of it.
Hold on one second.
Laser sword.
Yeah, I know, I cringe because we're video recording and we've been using the HP word a few times, uh, tonight, but, um, Councilman Dixon.
Okay, so.
Yeah, Councilwoman.
I did have something. I forgot to mention this. Um, I've been working with Kimberly and I've been working with the fire department on the Halloween parade this year. And in addition to the regular age groups that we're going to have, there's going to be a senior citizen who wants to dress up and be judged. There'll be, uh, even a group for dogs. So if someone wants to dress up their dog, and Bonnie's wonderful, who donated the prize for that, so, um, and there'll be a trunk or treat. And so we're going to have that all set up along the sides of the parking lot. And so, uh, just spread the word and there's going to be a prize for the best trunk that's been decorated. And so we're kind of expanding it this year and making it a lot more interesting. So, uh, just spread the word, please.
Five o'clock on Halloween.
Five o'clock on Halloween.
Looking forward to being part of that and judging that.
I suspect fall dogs entered in the parade without a license.
They had better, yes.
And cats.
And cats, that might be, um, yes, the applications available. Nothing there, plan.
Yes. Okay, so my thoughts on the Wizards event. And I'll just give my advi- my thoughts to the council and some advice to Tom as he goes to negotiate this. There, there's got to be a way to make this happen. There's got to be a concession that's made on both sides. As far, if it's a little bit of the town portion in escrow, I'm okay with that because I think the event brings more money to town than all of our expense. I don't want, I don't want, I don't want to shoulder it all, but potentially, we might need to negotiate that a little bit. As far as the number of people, I heard all these numbers thrown around last year, thirty, thirty-five thousand people. I'm not sure what thirty-five thousand people looks like. There was a lot of people on the street last year. Um, you know, I came down to visit, I spent hours there. It was almost impossible, if you had a wallet full of money, to spend it on the street. So if even there's seventy-five hundred people and we think there was thirty thousand people last year, and you're actually able to get more of those people into your stores and more of those people are actually able to eat and drink on the street, because a lot of people weren't even able to do that last year because there was no vendors, I think you're talking about in economies of scale that it was, would still be a radical business day for everybody on the street, even at seventy-five hundred. If it's even a little bit, I, seventy-five hundred sounds a little bit low to me. I feel like the street from lower Spring Street to the square probably handle more than that. I don't know what that looks like. Again, that would be like a decision that someone could make with a, with a meter counter on people. But, you know, there's, if, if people can enjoy the space a little bit more and actually, like, buy things at the stores as well. And I came down, like, I think I came down with a group of, like, eight relatives. It was pretty hard for us to get anything on the street, just, I mean, a bottle of water wasn't hanging around. So there's going to be vendors to service to people. So I think there, I don't think we need thirty-five thousand people. Um, if that was the number and that's too much, we could do the safety, I, I can see that. Um, but I think, I mean, we don't even have events that come anywhere near that. And if there was that many people circulating through this year, if it's done better this year, better organized, you're able to get more people into the stores, and, and there indeed is a lesser number, because if you do a charge at the gate to get in, the number's going to drop significantly as opposed to just being able to just walk onto the street. So that will curb crowd control in and of itself.
So Tom has his meeting tomorrow, um, and, uh, I had a conversation yesterday with the president and CEO of Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And I think that some of those comments, my comments, were misrepresented in a meeting that occurred last night. Um, I wasn't going to address this, but people have said it. So first of all, um, what I communicated was that safety is first and foremost the concern and limiting liability to the town of Newton. Period. End of story. Um, safety is of utmost importance. With regards to the calculations, um, that two and a half per car parking space number came from me. And, um, that was on a conference call that I participated in, in a planning meeting just a couple of weeks ago. Um, and that has come from my twenty-plus years in, in, um, event planning and nonprofit experience. I'm very well versed in the way that nonprofits, it's me to balance their revenues, um, and their expenses and the mission delivery and, um, the rest of that. And, but what I said was, um, that number is not based in science and was based on the number of parking spaces in and around the town of Newton. It wasn't going out and, um, shoveling people from the other side of the county, et cetera. So what I had asked and what Tom did and what the police, uh, chief did was look at some nationally accepted calculations for festivals and numbers of people that could be accommodated in public spaces. So numbers that have been floating around, um, and have been discussed in amongst sidebar meetings, um, came out of that calculation. Tomorrow will be the first time, quite frankly, that our town manager or our CEO is actually sitting down with Big Brothers and Big Sisters CEO. So this meeting, um, is an important one because a lot of conversation is happening via hearsay. With all due respect to Pastor and some of your comments, um, you know, I don't know, you know, all of the facts, uh, are, are equally presented in all of the side conversations that have been happening. So, um, you know, there are lots of considerations, but as we know, and as an ordinance has been passed earlier this year, actually, last year, after last year's event, um, we had to put protections in place for our, um, our businesses, the people that were attending the event, our taxpayers in town. Um, and, uh, you know, although we are a, a government entity, this, we need to make sure that, um, we're protecting all of our stakeholders. And so, um, I have no doubt that Mr. Russo will go into that meeting tomorrow, um, uh, with his, his facts, uh, in place and, um, uh, with an open mind. Um, but we need to understand that there are, um, you know, certain things that we are obligated to, um, take in consideration for, um, the safety and security of everybody attending and for our businesses. And so, um, I look forward to, uh, outcome from that meeting tomorrow. And nobody up here or up in, um, administration or over the police department, um, negates the fact that it's wonderful to have, uh, you know, everybody coming to town and it's a wonderful opportunity for the town to be showcased. And of course, we want people coming into town and patronizing our businesses and, um, participating in fun events and, um, but we need to make sure that that is done in an organized, safe, and efficient manner. So, uh, that's all I'll say on that and, and we'll continue with the conversations with regards to some timelines and some other facts that have been thrown out tonight. Again, not sure if they've been completely accurate, but, um, we'll, we'll look forward to the results for, of tomorrow's meeting.
Yeah, man, if I could jump in. So, you know, there's a few issues. And if Trump can negotiate with North Korea, I think I can manage, and then on Spring Street. So, you know, escrow, the police and public works are estimating twenty-two thousand five hundred, right? But that's based on the assumption of the letter that was sent from Big Brothers in August estimating thirty-five thousand people. We know there were not thirty-five thousand people in Newton last year. We're physically not capable of managing that many people on Spring Street. The math doesn't add up. So that, that became the narrative, but it's a false narrative that now an organization in Morris County is buying into and, and it's really unfair to them because they weren't here, they couldn't see, they don't know. But Chief Richards worked with our Assistant Director of Public Works. Those are the numbers we're estimating for escrow based on the numbers they're giving us for attendance fees, right? Math. Now, I know they have a couple of issues with it. Conceptually, they object to paying fees, but it was a resolution February twenty-sixth that the council adopted where we talked about escrow and we talked about events. The merchants knew this resolution existed, so did the chamber, right? This is February twenty-sixth. So the, the wizard event is under the Town Endorsed Events, which is privately held events the town provides specific assistance to, some of which will be free, others which will include escrow or other fee payment. It's in the resolution that the council adopted February twenty-sixth. So I have to follow what you pass as a law. Um, so I need to discuss that with Big Brothers and see, like Deputy Mayor said, maybe there's a way to compromise, maybe we pay public works, they pay police. You know, I, I will try to work with them on that. But then, you know, escrow, there will be an escrow and they will have to provide payment. Head count, the chief used the standard of one person per ten square feet. It's a generally accepted crowd measurement standard employed by event planners and law enforcement agencies nationwide. So he measured Spring Street, including lower, it yielded five thousand people. Memory card yielded two thousand and that's how he came up with the seven. Now, just saying the number is too low doesn't make it so. The chief is using a formula, it's incumbent on Big Brothers, and I'm going to tell them this tomorrow, they need to come up with an alternative standard by which to measure a safe crowd. They can't just say our number is too low. They need to give me a formula and a standard that they're using to counter the number that the chief of police, who has to sign off on this, has come up with. Our population is only eight thousand. So we're talking about an event where for four hours, we're doubling our population. And, you know, there used to be a time when I was town manager where if we had five hundred people or a thousand, we patted ourselves on the back as if that was a significant and special event. Now we're talking thousands and ten thousands, and that's great, but we still got to go back to safety being the primary concern. You know, we're only three square miles, we're talking about, you know, a small area in town. This is a private fundraising event for a group in Morris County. They're not located in Newton and they're not located in Sussex County. So we have to determine, as a municipality, how much of taxpayer dollars of the town Newton are we spending to benefit an organization in Mountain Lakes? Great group, they do great work, but there's a balancing act between the publicity portion, the showcase to the merchants, and the fact that we're, we're running a community and we're, we're entrusted to spend taxpayer dollars wisely and the group that we're benefiting predominantly is not in Newton or Sussex County, which according to the resolution, the event must be sponsored by a private nonprofit organization located within the town of Newton or county of Sussex. Okay? So we're stretching that because of their affiliation with the chamber, but we're trying to work with that. You know, so, so, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here. Closing the street. The Big Brothers organization has intentions, they've started already, of selling tickets or wristband access to summer hall of the areas. Now, when I hear wristbands or tickets, I hear private event, because that's something very different than Newton Day, which we don't charge for Fall Festival, Memorial Day, Holiday or St. Patrick's Day parades. So if we're charging, if some group is charging wristband or tickets, then we're blocking off the street because then you're limiting access because you're, you're asking people to pay. Okay. Now we're blocking off the street, which affects the number of people that can participate. The chamber would argue that they probably want it open. So Big Brothers wants it closed, the chamber wants it open. So there's competing interest on the other side that we're not going to get in the middle of. But we're going to try to find a compromise to see if there's a way to have an event that's open, but there's access. And I'm not saying there's an easy answer, but we're not looking to recreate last year. Last, last year was a catastrophe. It was unsafe, it was unplanned, and it was mismanaged and we're lucky nobody got killed. Okay? So like, the businesses may have done well, but they were inside selling their wares and we were in a panic on the outside seeing what was going on. And there was a fire call and people thought it was part of the event and it was unsafe and vehicles couldn't get to where they needed to. We can't recreate that. So the poor planning of last year can't continue with this event for this year. Um, I mean, they talked about vendors, right? So I know that there was the potential that there would be vendors on Spring Street. We had about thirty-six or thirty-four for the Fall Festival. Let's say you had about forty for this Wizards event. If you're setting up tables, chairs, and tents, now you're limiting your standing room access for visitors. So now you're cutting down the number of people that can access the street because you're having tables, chairs, and tents. So that five thousand number for Spring Street, that maximum attendee capacity gets reduced. Doesn't get increased because there's vendors now. So that's a competing interest as well. They're looking to charge money for the tickets to access the event. That's fine. They came up with the seventeen-five based on the parking number that the mayor had given. Based on that and, and a rough average for what they're looking to charge, Big Brothers and Big Sisters would generate approximately a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in revenues for a Morris County-based organization. While the Newton Chamber, if they got a hundred dollars for each of the forty vendors, would get four thousand dollars. There's a little bit of disparity there that I'm not saying that means we won't have the event, but that's something that we all need to consider, that the, most of the money, if there is profit from this event, is going out of, out of town and out of county. And that's something we have to be cognizant of, okay? Because how much do the taxpayers have to pay for this? In August, Big Brothers sent us a letter regarding the event. They said there was thirty-five thousand attendees. That triggered red flags by the chief of police.
And Tom, that was the first official communication.
Official written correspondence.
Regardless of other meetings or whatever happened.
Right. August twenty-eighteen, that's when we ramped up. Kimberly Williams, my community development director, set up a meeting, was attended by my office, police department, clerk's office, public works, representatives from the chamber and Big Brothers were also in attendance. So that's when we officially started planning, was that letter came and we had that meeting. Forget previous mayor, previous deputy mayor, spring, no. When that letter came, that's what started, started the process. And, you know, according to our auditor, who's here, you know, we're not permitted as a municipality to make donations to nonprofits. We can support the fire department, we can support the first aid squad, those are legally permissible by statute. We purchase tickets for chamber events. We provide, you know, we buy tickets for meetings, dinners, conferences, function. We provide support for events, we sponsor and we co-sponsor. We don't get to pick winners and losers in the nonprofit space. There's no statute that allows for councils to make donations to nonprofits. We checked with the state of New Jersey today just to make sure that I have my facts ready when I meet with this, you know, the president and CEO tomorrow. So we're not going to just give away services because then they're in kind donations that we're giving to a nonprofit and we're not supposed to do that. So we have to figure out a way, and this is my goal tomorrow, is how do we have an event that's safe for the town, for the residents that are here and the visitors that come? How can we showcase the, the merchants and the businesses on Spring Street that would want to be successful? How can we help Big Brothers, Big Sisters? You know, they're putting a lot of time and money into the event, so I have to be very cognizant of the fact that it's their volunteers, it's their insurance, they're coordinating the PR and marketing, music, like, I, I don't minimize the commitment that they're putting into this, even though they, they're not in Newton and they're not in the county. I mean, that says a lot about their character and that they think this can work. But we're going to give a little, but we can't give a lot. And we can't give it all because it's not fair to the people here that pay taxes here. It's not fair to the five of you and it's not fair to the police department. We're gonna have to pull police from Sparta or another town. It's not fair to my guys that are giving up their Saturday, coming in at four AM for the parade and then I'm gonna have guys come in for this event. Like, there's a lot of things here. It's doable, but it is by no means as simple as some people have made it out to be. It's not. Thank you.
No, and as I indicated and clearly as Tom has illustrated, he's well-prepared for tomorrow's meeting as I have no doubt that he was. So, we'll look forward to the results of that meeting tomorrow. Any other council and manager comments at this time for the good of the order? All right, we have no executive session tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at nine oh nine.
All right, I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Flynn, a second by Councilman Flynn. To adjourn at nine oh nine, all favor. Thank you all for being here.